Good evening. I call this meeting Montgomery County School Board to order at 7:30, October 15, 2013. I will serve as board chair for the evening since Wendell Jones is unable to attend. Would you please stand for the pledge allegiance?
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions about the agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Next item, honors, awards, and recognitions. At this time, we'll begin the honors and recognition section of our program, and Dr. Loes Graham, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, will preside.
Tonight, we have several honors and recognitions, and at this time, Mrs. Blackburn will present our business partner recognitions.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding business partners this evening. We've had an opportunity to chat with them this evening before the meeting and thank them for all the things that they do. Just to reconstruct how we got to this point, you'll recall that in March, the school board adopted a resolution honoring more than thirty local companies and organizations for their support of Montgomery County Public Schools. These organizations were submitted to the business honor roll for the Virginia School Boards Association. All of the businesses were invited to a business partner reception that occurred prior to the meeting this evening. Tonight, we have just a few of our outstanding business partners with us. I'd like to ask them if they would come forward as I call their company name and the person representing the company. So first, we have CCS Incorporated, which was nominated by Blacksburg Middle School. CCS is represented this evening by Marty Muscatella, CEO. Mr. Muscatella. Our second business that we'll recognize this evening is Tuck Chiropractic, Chiropractic, and Dr. Matthew Maury was nominated by Christiansburg High School. And Dr. Maury brought a number of his colleagues with him this evening, and I'd like to ask them if they would all come forward at this time. Matt Maury, Dr. Ray Tuck, Dr. Jennifer Rathman, and Suzanne Barnett. We greatly appreciate your support of Montgomery County Public Schools. Next, we have The Home Depot of Christiansburg, who was nominated by Bellevue Elementary, and The Home Depot this evening is represented by Alan Cox and Jimmy Holcomb. If they would please come forward. We also have with us this evening the Reiner Animal Hospital, nominated by Auburn High School, represented this evening by Rhonda Wright. And we also have representatives this evening from Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce with us, and although they were not nominated this year, I would certainly want to compliment them for the many ways in which they support Montgomery County Public Schools, including being a primary supporter of our Teacher of the Year recognition program. And with us this evening from the chamber is Sharon Scott. Sharon, if you would stand and be recognized. The generosity of these businesses improves the educational experience of our young people. I can't say thank you enough for your great support. We look forward to making this an annual event. Those who are not with us this evening will receive their certificates and a letter from Montgomery County Public Schools on behalf of the school board for their contribution to education in Montgomery County. Thank you again.
At this time, if Ms. Blackburn will remain with us, she will share the School Board Academy Awards.
Excellent. This is one of my favorite times of the year because I get to recognize our school board members. They have an opportunity throughout the year to recognize students and recognize school administrators and teachers and organizations, and this is an opportunity to recognize them for the things that they do. The Virginia School Boards Association annually recognizes board members and the superintendent for their commitment to becoming further educated in boardsmanship, skills, and curriculum issues through attendance at academy programs. Board members can receive five levels of awards depending on their level of involvement. This year, we have recipients at three levels. I'd like to ask the board member to come forward when I call their name and their level of recognition. The Award of Excellence goes to Phyllis Albritton, Ms. Albritton. The Award of Honor for this year goes to Mr. Joe Ivers. And we have three members this year who distinguish themselves with awards of achievement, and those members are Wendell Jones, Jamie Bond, and Sarah Woolsey. If you would come forward and get your certificates. I'd like to thank each of you for giving so generously of your time and your talents to Montgomery County Public Schools. You make a difference in the quality of the educational experience of our students. Thank you so much.
If Rick Weaver will come forward. He is our Supervisor of Career and Technical Education, and he will present our next awards.
Good evening. It's my honor to introduce to you a team of FFA students from Blacksburg High School who, at the State FFA Convention this June, won first in the state in the State Environmental and Natural Resources Career Development Event. These students not only won first place as a team, but one of the individuals, Paige Crane, was the top individual in the state, and another, Caitlin Willard, was the eighth highest-scoring individual in the state. Those two team members, as well as Chris Rakes, were seniors at the time and have since moved on to their college careers and are unable to be here. But tonight, I would like to introduce you their teacher and coach, Wes Waltney, and the student who is still in attendance at Montgomery County and Blacksburg High School, Ben Parker, accompanied by his parents, Bobby and Win Parker. If you'll come forward, please.
If Rebecca Boomal would join us. She is our Supervisor of Transportation, and she will share our National School Bus Rodeo Award.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's indeed a privilege for me to once again have the opportunity to recognize our school bus drivers for their accomplishments, as I've done in the past. And each year, we have school bus competitions in local, Virginia, and national levels, and we've been very privileged to be able to go to the national levels on very many occasions. Local winners start the competition in three types of school buses: conventional, transit bus, and small special-needs bus. It begins with a written knowledge test and then a pre-trip test, and then eventually they get behind the wheel and demonstrate their skills. At the Virginia School Bus Safety Competition, which was held in Richmond, we had two drivers that were first-place winners, and a third came in second. That's quite an honor for us to have a driver in all three class competitions at the top of their class of group. This evening, I'd like to recognize the two that placed first in the state competition and then competed at the national competition in Tulsa, Oklahoma, in July. The national competition is one of the most important events in the school bus industry with the best school drivers from the U.S. and Canada competing for top honors and national recognition. At this time, I'd like for Josh Simkins and Russell Altizer to please come forward to the podium. I'd like to start with Josh. Josh has driven a school bus for Montgomery County Schools for twenty-four years and drives in the Auburn Strand. In addition to his route, he's a certified school bus driver trainer and has trained many of our new drivers. He's competed in seven national competitions and has placed in the top ten in most of those, placing first in the nation in the transit bus competition in two of them. This year, he competed in a conventional-style bus, although he drives a transit, so he'd have a little more competition than just winning the transit. Josh, congratulations. Next, I'd like to recognize Russell Altizer. Russell has driven a school bus for Montgomery County Schools for the past thirty-four years and also drives in the Auburn Strand. In addition to his route, he also is a certified school bus driver trainer and trains many of our new drivers as well. At the beginning of the school year, Josh, I mean, excuse me, Russell, also teaches hundreds of students, pre-K through first grade, safety in and around a school bus, and that's extremely important for us to keep our children safe, and I think we've been very successful in that category. Russell's also competed at the state and national school bus safety competition for many years. He's placed first or second at the state level in either the conventional or transit bus competition for most of the last twelve years, and has competed at the national level almost every year since 2000. Russell competed in the small bus special-needs competition, and he drives a seventy-seven passenger bus normally. That may sound like, oh, that's easy because that's a small bus, but actually, we have the wheelchair competition in that as well, and that's an extremely difficult part of the competition. Russell, congratulations once again on representing our school system and Virginia with honors.
Jennifer Weaver, our Director of Secondary Education, will introduce the Senior of the Month program.
Good evening. A very special portion of our board meeting is the opportunity to recognize a Senior of the Month. If you didn't have an opportunity to see the photos and profiles outside, please take a moment to see them. We have some fantastic representatives this month. This time, I'd like to introduce the principals and assistant principals, who will be presenting this evening. Mr. Carl Polly, who's the principal at Auburn High School, Brian Kits, the principal of Blacksburg High School, Ms. Amy Williams is here, the assistant principal for Christiansburg High School, and Danny Knott, the principal of Eastern Montgomery High School.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Members of the board, it's my pleasure this evening to introduce to you Auburn High School's October Senior of the Month, Sidney Fain. Sidney is an exemplary student. She's exceptionally focused, contemplative, introspective, mature, and confident. She is also well-known for her leadership and creativity. Perhaps the most endearing quality is Sidney's primary motivation. She is exceptional, not because she is motivated by grades, but because she is engaged by learning and she desires to bolster her already-strong academic skills. Sidney knows high school is about risk, challenge, and growth, and that in the process, it can also be fun. Sidney is accompanied by her parents this evening, Gary and Karen Fain. Will you please come forward at this time to be recognized?
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here with you tonight to recognize Blacksburg High School's Senior of the Month for October, Philip Wang. Coming from Ms. Ferracio and English and our forensic sponsor, she says this. Philip is a dedicated student who puts his heart and soul into his academics and his position as captain of the forensics team. I have known Philip for three years, and every day, I am more and more impressed by his skills, his sense of humor, and his drive to be the best person he can be, not just for himself, but to be an example too and a leader of all those with whom he encounters. I am immensely proud and fond of this young man and all that he contributes to Blacksburg High School. Blacksburg High School is proud of Philip, and he is accompanied tonight by his mom and dad. Would you all please come forward?
Good evening. It is with great pride that I introduce to you Christiansburg High School's October Senior of the Month, Latricia D. Young. Latricia was selected as the new CHS Senior of the Month for her steadfast support of her school, her friends, her family, and her community. Over the past four years, she has proven to be the consummate behind-the-scenes player who worked quietly, without much recognition or fanfare, in a number of successful school activities and projects. She is loyal to a fault and is dedicated to establishing a life that will be centered on service to others. She is kind, generous, and an all-around good person. It is for all these qualities that we would like to bestow a long-overdue honor on her by naming her the CHS Senior of the Month for October 2013. Latricia is accompanied this evening by her parents, Wayne and Marlene Young, and her sister, LaToya. Will you please come forward at this time to be recognized?
Good evening. It's my privilege tonight to introduce to you Eastern Montgomery High School's, I'm sorry, I would have done that. All you had to do was wave at me. I'll start over again if that's okay with you. Good evening. It's my privilege tonight to introduce Eastern Montgomery High School's October Senior of the Month, Jake King Yoder. Jake Yoder has a unique combination of common sense and work ethic. Partnering with his eagerness to learn makes him an outstanding student academically. His caring personality is evident. In class, as he mentors younger band members and helps them learn the do's and don'ts of being a member of the Marching Mustangs Band. Mr. Stanley Bragg, our band director, had that to say about Jake. Jake is accompanied tonight by his parents, Janet and Denton Yoder. If they would please come forward to be recognized. Daniela Ramirez was our September Senior of the Month, and unfortunately, she had planned to be here tonight but was unable to attend, so thank you.
At this time, we will take a five-minute break to allow the board and audience members' time to congratulate the recipients of the awards.
Next item is public address. At this time and at each of our regularly-scheduled board meetings, we set aside thirty minutes for citizens to address the board about issues that pertain to public education in Montgomery County. Each speaker is allowed three minutes. The screens throughout the room and on the laptop will indicate when the speaker has thirty seconds remaining and when the three minutes have passed. At this time, we have no one signed up to speak, so if there's anyone else out there who would care to speak, would you please step to the microphone and state your name and address? Seeing no one, public address is closed. Consent items. There's nothing to be pulled from the consent agenda. Then we will consider the consent items approved. Is there any discussion regarding the consent agenda? Okay, considered approved. Personnel report. Do I have a motion to adopt the personnel report? Any discussion on the personnel report? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Personnel report is approved. Payment of the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Will we pay the bills?
Any discussion on the bills? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Bills are paid. Financial summary report. Do I have a motion to acknowledge receipt of the financial summary report?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Carried. Superintendent, report recommendations and announcements. We'll now move on to Superintendent, Ms., reports for Ms. Blackburn.
Thank you, Mr. Ivers. Our first item this evening is your January reorganization meeting. The school board must annually set the date for the first meeting in January, when the board's reorganization meeting will be held. At this meeting, the board meeting schedule for the calendar year will be determined. The school board will be asked this evening to set the first meeting in January 2014. The first Tuesday of the month, which is your usual meeting date, falls on January 7, 2014. That date is presented this evening for your consideration for your reorganization meeting.
I so move that our first meeting, 2014, will be on January 7.
Your second?
I'll second.
Can we add that that be at 7:30?
At 7:30, yes. Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our first meeting is set.
Okay, our next item is the update on Advanced Ed Visit and the Six-Year Plan and the Clock March Zone as we move towards our visiting team, which will be from November 10 through November 13. Dr. Graham and Rhonda are going to join her this evening. Thank you both.
Good evening, board members and Ms. Blackburn. Tonight, we would like to present an update of our progress with the Advanced Ed accreditation visit and also an update on the Montgomery County Public Schools Six-Year Plan. What we hope to do is highlight some of our major accomplishments, and first, Ms. Baker is going to share some of our progress in preparation for the Advanced Ed Visit.
Good evening. The Central Office Advanced Ed Team and all of the schools have completed and submitted documentation online to Advanced Ed in preparation for the team's visit in November. Staff members are being prepared for the Advanced Ed visit through the review of their continuous improvement plans and potential questions that the team could ask. The Advanced Ed visiting team will use an observation instrument called the Elliot, Effective Learning Environments Observation Tool, which will be used to review the team, the school staff, prior to hosting the team. The school board is scheduled to be interviewed by the Advanced Ed Team on Monday, November 11, from 12:30 to 1:30. An additional time has been made available on Tuesday from 5:30 to 6:00 for interviews with the Advanced Ed Team to accommodate a maximum of two board members who cannot meet on Monday. The Advanced Ed Team will provide an exit report at a school board meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, November 13, from 12:30 to 1:30.
The Advanced Ed Team will certainly want to review our six-year plan, and they will ask the board about progress that has been made. The six-year plan has been updated to reflect current initiatives since both federal and state guidelines have changed over the last six years. This updated Areas at a Glance document aligns with the new federal and state regulations, and this document will be used to guide us in our last year of the six-year plan. This is our last year of that plan. During this six-year, during the six-year plan, the division has been resourceful to continue instruction during some significant challenges. If you'll reflect back, we've weathered a recession, we've had some tight budgets, we continue to have unfunded mandates, we've gone through redistricting, we've gone through a roof collapse at Blacksburg High School, and we've had ever-changing federal and state regulations. Through all that, we have very much appreciated our Through all that, we have very much appreciated our board and our new superintendent that have supported us to make significant progress and gains in spite of some challenges. As a review of the progress, as a review of the progress that Montgomery County Public Schools has made, what we would like to do tonight is engage the school board in an activity, which will highlight some of our achievements. We believe we've made some significant gains in these last years. So you will each receive a card, and on that card, you will see some, some major accomplishment that we believe we've made and a few details about the accomplishment. So we'll give you a minute to read the card, and we're going to ask Ms. Blackburn to go first, and what she will do is she will read the card aloud, and then she, you may feel free to elaborate on the accomplishment that, that you receive or on any of the accomplishments as we, as we share out. And so with that, Ms. Blackburn, would you begin by sharing and celebrating the first accomplishment?
Be happy to. One of the focus areas for Montgomery County Public Schools has been improved communication, and some of the examples of that are our use of board docs, our branding logo change, our parent portal, our school messenger, our transparency through the video broadcasting of our school board meetings, our board budget website to keep everyone involved with what's going on with finances. So certainly, improved communication has been a real focus area for the school division.
Thank you. Shall we just go to the left and let you go?
Sure. Division Initiatives, Social Justice, College Zone, and C2G, or Commit to Graduate. It's interesting because I wear my Commit to Graduate tee-shirt as a night shirt. So, it says my night shirt on. So, it's, it's a, I do wash it on occasion, but it's a, it's a nightly reminder that, that's what it's all about. We need to commit to graduate, and I think numbers will tell that, that the commitment is there countywide, and it doesn't start at high school, it starts in, in elementary school, even before that. Social justice, I'm very proud to be part of the diversity team, and I think that we've made great strides. The question I've always asked teachers, when that student walks into your room, and that student is the quarterback in the football team, what do you see? And if that student walks into your room and he or she is dressed with secondhand clothes and disheveled, what do you see? And, and I think we've focused on the fact that we need to see beyond that. We need to see the individual, and we need to make sure that that individual moves from that particular spot to graduation in the right manner. So anyway.
That's not that good. In order for us to help keep children of today engaged, I think in this technological time, we see the need for 21st century schools, which gives us our technology updates with smart boards, document cameras, and application systems.
In order to assist kids that might be struggling in different areas, reading or math, we have implemented some instructional interventions, which include hiring some instructional coaches, our Read 180 program and our Math 180 program, and also Level Literacy Intervention Program.
Thank you.
I got the most exciting card. Mr. Bernato, I got the facilities card, and I'm sure you have not been busy at all the last few years, but let me tell you what's happened at the facility, since you probably don't remember everything that's happened. A few months after I came on the board, I remember getting a call related to the Blacksburg High School gym roof collapse, and I'm sure Ms. Blackburn remembers that more than I do because she wasn't even here at that point, so as much as we remembered, I'm sure she remembers it even better. You know, we've, we've opened four new schools during this time period, and they've been Eastern Montgomery Elementary, Price's Fork Elementary, Blacksburg High, and Auburn High. I just remember all the meetings we had, all the debates on, you know, do we go with the Auburn strand, do we go Blacksburg strand, do we go ask for more tax money, what do we do, and all of those meetings we had for months and months and months, and what an amazing time, especially right now after these new schools have opened. But in addition to that, we have safety updates for our schools, and we're still working on those right now, and then, of course, Central Office has some nice new offices in this building, so it's amazing the facility improvements we've made over the last six years, and, you know, we owe all of that to our staff, and they put in a lot of extra-long, hard hours, and sometimes I think we fail to remember that, and so this is a tribute to what our staff have done over the last six years.
Student Achievement Team. These folks have been working to make sure that our students across the district all are, all are achieving at the level that they can do best. The focus on that this year is relationships and making sure that each child feels connected to someone and that someone cares about what's going on with them and how they can help them be the best that they can be. We have counselors, teachers, specialists, administrators, you know, everyone in the district is involved in making sure that our children are successful, and I am looking forward to see, seeing how this relationship building makes all of our children feel welcome and that they can do and be whatever they want to be. So that is just one of my, since I've been on this board, one of my big goals has been to see those gaps go away, and I believe that this will be a key part of that.
Model for Effective Instruction. The Curriculum Department developed the Model for Effective Instruction to establish a common language to frame and guide the work of all Montgomery County Public School instructional personnel, and I'm excited in that it covers many areas. For the students, we want them to apply their knowledge and be engaged, and that's in every school, getting the student to be engaged in applying, application, making it happen. In curriculum, we have new instructional strategies, how to make it happen for the teachers, and content knowledge. Also, we have assessments and relationships, both between teachers and students, teachers, staff, faculty, and students and students, it's very important, and to have really good assessments. I think this is very crucial because it helps everyone know, the parent, the teacher, the student, where he or she is in their growth, and I'm very excited about what you all have been doing for us. Thank you.
And since Mr. Jones is not here, and we have one more card. The last one is Character Education and Student Support. We are very blessed to have the New River Valley Community Services partner with, and their counselors partner with us. We have a caseworker in every single school. We have bully prevention programs, positive behavior supports, student assistance program teams, and Winning Choices that is currently in progress. Thank you so much for your participation tonight, you've done a great job, and this is just a sampling of the accomplishments realized by Montgomery County Public Schools during the past six years. The screen reflects some of the additional initiatives that have been implemented. We hope you will feel free to share these accomplishments with the Advanced Ed Team when they tour our school system in November. Thanks again.
Thank you. Any questions? We appreciate it.
Yes. What does Elliott mean again?
Effective Learning Evaluation Observation Tool, and we gave you a copy of it at the last board, board meeting.
Okay.
And the schools will get a copy of that as well, so they know exactly what the team is looking for when they come into a classroom.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for engaging and sharing with us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Thank you, Dr. Graham. Our next item is the Budget Calendar, and I'm going to make just a few comments, and then if you have other questions, we've got Dr. Staten and Ms. Miano with us as well. Each year, the school board adopts a budget calendar to guide the process of budget development to final approval. The process will include regular updates to the board as information becomes available. As you know, this is a gubernatorial election year, and there may very well be significant changes in the budget from that that is originally put forward by Governor McDonnell. At this point, the only concrete information that I can specifically offer is that districts are being advised by the Virginia Association of School Superintendents to expect that you will have at least a 1% increase in the employer contribution to VRS in each of the next six years. So that's at least 6% over the next six years. The calendar as presented includes three meetings that are designated completely to budget or budget-related discussion. They are January 28, which is a public hearing, April 24, which is a budget work session for the board, and April 29, which is a public hearing on the proposed budget. As the calendar outlines, the budget would be considered for final approval by the board at your May 6, 2014, meeting. As the budget information solidifies, there may very well be a need for an additional board workshop between January 7 and January 21, but we thought we would reserve the opportunity to set that meeting when we see a little bit more about what kind of information is coming to us from Richmond. Also, you will recall that last year, we included a public forum on board priorities, and it was held in early November. A comparable meeting has not yet been pre-planned due to the limited information that we have about the budget for the next biennium. It is possible that the board may want to choose to add such a forum at a later date as we begin to see what the budget picture looks like. The calendar is presented this evening for your discussion, for your consideration, for suggestions that you may have, and hopefully for your approval so that we may begin to move in this direction.
Any comments?
No, I just would hope that we could have a public forum. I think that was very helpful.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? You're talking about in November?
You're doing this, right? You're saying this.
Right.
Are you saying that you'd like to have a public forum like we did before as early as November?
I thought I was hearing you say that you didn't have information to have.
I don't, I don't have enough, that's what I'm saying. I think we could set one once we begin to see what's coming out of Richmond, but right now, I don't have enough information to.
Right. So my motion is to approve the calendar in front of us, and if we need to adjust, we can adjust.
Great. And that's my second.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the calendar as is, with the ability to make adjustments as we go along. And there's a second to that motion. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have a calendar.
Items D and E are related. Actually, item D asks the board to approve a Virginia Long-Term Disability Plan option for employees who enroll in the hybrid VRS. Our insurance consultant and staff members have been providing you information regarding the requirements of the VRS hybrid plan for a different long-term disability provision. At this time, I am recommending that the board accept the plan offered by VACOR. The recommended program offers greater benefits at a lower cost. It also appears to be the plan of preference for many of our neighboring school divisions. I'm prepared this evening to recommend the VACOR plan for your approval. For those who would like to see it, we do have the two slides from the previous meeting in which there was a side-by-side comparison of the Virginia VRS plan and the VACOR plan, which is the one that I'm recommending to you this evening. I'm going to ask Joe if he would just very briefly highlight the differences.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The, of course, the cost per employee, per hundred payroll is significantly lower with the standard than it is with the UNAM, which is the VRS plan.
And the standard is the VACOR plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the other big selling point there is the guaranteed lock. In the UNAM plan, the VRS plan, it's a six-month lock, and with the standard, it's a three-year And these are some of the requirements and some of the requirements that exceed the requirements set for by, by the code.
So in other words, the plan that we're recommending with VACOR has, it's less expensive, it has a longer guaranteed pricing rate, and it provides more benefits to the employee.
I may move that we accept the VACOR plan.
Second.
Okay, let's put it to vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, motion is passed. Would you please read the motion that we just passed, please, again?
The motion was to approve the Virginia Association of Counties Group Self-Insurance Risk Call by VACOR, and it's the Long-Term Disability Insurance Opt-Out Solution provided by the Standard Insurance Company.
Thank you.
So the next item is necessary to support the decision that you just made about an insurance provider. School divisions that choose another VLDP provider must provide an opt-out resolution that they are not going to participate in the state plan. That must be done no later than November 1. The decision is irrevocable, and I think that's important to remember. The resolution is attached for your consideration for action this evening. This is the last regular meeting of the board prior to the deadline.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed.
Our next item is our regular facilities projects update, and Dan is going to bring that to you this evening. I would like to share that I took an opportunity to go over to CHS today, and the new seats are in, the new curtains are hanging, and it is a wonderful sight to behold, and when you sit down, you do not touch concrete. So it is very, very nice, and I know Dan will tell you a little bit more about that when he speaks, so, Dan.
Thank you. We'll begin this evening with the replacing the auditorium seats. We're not quite finished, but the new seats, the majority of them in about 95%, and they were used yesterday for the first time at the Winning Choices Assembly. Megan Atkinson, Assistant Principal, told me today, I stopped over to see how things went, and she said she got a number of comments from students, they're so happy to have the new seats. So that's good. We'll be doing the carpet. We didn't know if we were going to have to do the carpet or not, but it turns out the seats didn't fit in the right place. The carpet's in the aisleways, but we are going to be doing the carpet during the Christmas time. But we are going to be doing the carpet during the Christmas time, winter holiday, winter break. And so that, the whole project will be completed at that time. The mobile classroom is well on its way. Tomorrow, we're pouring concrete sidewalk to support it, and also for the rest of the week, we'll be doing the final hookups and the ramps and the steps. So we hope within the next week or so that we'll be able to open that classroom. At Falling Branch, we've been working on a persistent leak. We finally, after getting some consultants, C N and roofing contractor tried one thing, we've determined that we have to replace about 900 square feet of the membrane. We've recently put that out for bids and got a bid back, and that should start within about a couple weeks. It's, we're going to use a TPO roof. It's a membrane roof, single sheet membrane, doesn't have the odor like an asphalt-built-up roof will have. So we think it'll be minimum impact or no impact to the school, and we'll get that finally stopped leaking in that one area. No new PTA booster or other type of projects this month, although I hear there are a couple being looked into. As far as the deposition of former school properties, the work is going on in the background. Only specific update I could tell you that we have is the former school board office at Junkin Street, we're turning over this week the maintenance to the county as well as the utility accounts. So they're moving over to the county this week, and that's basically out of our hands into their hands. And these are those top capital maintenance projects that $400,000 is funding. We've, I've added this time in that column D, you could see, I used to just have project manager, I added cost-to-date, actual cost. So you could see, we're about halfway through the door hardware security improvements, and that cost, we're doing that in-house, so the cost of that is just materials. We're starting, well, we've done some of the security work so far, and we're waiting on the grant money to do the rest. We've done Falling Branch, and we're in the process of beginning CPS for the front door and the Aphones and the video cameras and electric latches and swipe cards at those And we've completed the next two. We completed those this summer, and the auditorium seats are in process. Any questions?
This replace auditorium seats, 196K, is, is that the total, or is that still a running?
That's the running total. That includes the cost of the carpet, the anticipated cost of the carpet, and a little change, but we never know exactly what will happen, so it's, it's going to be very close to that.
Very close to what? The 196?
The 196.
Or the 230?
The 196 is what we're hoping that it will come in at, but we're not ready to say that we have that much surplus yet, but we are getting good pricing on what we're doing.
Thank you. Any other questions?
On the doors that you're using the swipes for, what's your backup if the swipe goes down?
They still have the metal keys.
So anyone who needs access to the building would still have a hard key? Reason I ask is because we ran into that.
Oh, did you really?
So, yeah. And we didn't have our keys, so.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, these are two sets of keys. We still have those because we're not getting, we can't afford yet swipe card locks on all the doors of the building. So we're keeping both, we're keeping the old system as well. So that's, we should probably keep that forever. That's a good point. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. And the final item that I have this evening is our capital projects update, and I'm going to ask Curtis Ellsworth if he would come to the podium. Curtis also has with him this evening Jason Pack. And Jason, if you would stand, let these folks see who you are, because Jason is our new project manager at Auburn Middle School, assisted by Mark Ferguson. I don't believe Mark's here this evening, but nice to have you with us tonight, Jason.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to be here to update you on your capital projects. I would like to start with the two new high schools. We are in the closeout phase of both high schools, meaning we're gathering all the final documentation on those. And Blacksburg, we have a few remaining punch list items that we're working off, and hopefully those will be complete in the next couple of weeks, two to three weeks. What the team has really been focusing on is the new Auburn Middle School, and as the picture shows, if you're driving down Route 8 going south, this is what you see. School looks a lot different than it, than it was when it was a high school. The mast demolition is complete. All the hazardous materials have been abated from the building, and some of the site work and utilities have taken place in the front of the school there. As you can see, we've, branch has a port foundation, so you have foundation concrete, so they're, pretty soon you'll start seeing the building going up, the new additions to the, to the school. The picture on your right is a picture of one of the main corridors of the building. This is near where the media center is. You can see some of the renovation work that's going on inside. And this is another picture of one of the classrooms on your left. That classroom, you can see new ductwork going up. It's been sanded and cleaned. It's pretty much ready for, for new, you know, electrical and mechanical and new finishes go in that room. And then the other picture is some of the framing of the walls and the new CTE wing of the building. So you'll start seeing electrical, mechanical going up in there. You can see some of it in the floor as your, as the picture shows. So making a lot of good progress. We're on schedule and, and our target to be completed next fall.
Wow.
So that's all I have, except for questions.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to thank you all. It's been quite a journey, and you all have been amazingly awesome for us and for our schools and our children, our staff, teachers. I just thank you.
Thank you.
Really.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Curtis. Mr. Ivers.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Any unfinished, any unfinished business that the board members need to?
Not exactly sure. Since we've talked about it, I guess it is unfinished. And that is SROs in our elementary buildings. Are there, is there any talk at the state level to be funding that? This is a, you know, ever since Sandy Hook, it is a constant reminder, all across the country. You hear it every day. And here in Montgomery County, we are having to be more vigilant than we were before, at least I think. So do we have data that shows what was going on in the buildings, you know, in years past as far as folks being on the property, and, or is there an increase because folks are just kind of focused on elementary buildings, and that's where they kind of gravitate these days?
I don't think we have really any long-term data about trespassers or those kinds of things. You would have the ability to access police reports for incidents in which there was a police report written where you might gather some data. But the data that we gather as a school system is crime and violence report, but that has to do with our students and what happens with folks that we control, not whoever might come in from outside. Relative to SROs at the elementary schools or SRO increases at all, you know, the state did budget some money. The Sheriff's Department did write a grant and did have the potential for funding, but it, like many grants, is a grant that says, okay, we're going to fund you for X amount of time, but you have to pick up the difference between what we're funding and what it actually costs to put an officer in a school. And we decrease the amount of money that we give you each year. And under those conditions, it does not appear that there's going to be the addition of resource officers in our county schools, at least not for this year. I've not heard any conversation about the state really picking up the price tag, so it would come back to the community, again, through the board supervisors as to what priority would be placed on expansion of that program. We do have, you know, a great relationship with each of our agencies, and anytime we have, you know, a critical event at any school, they're immediately present and they immediately redouble their efforts. But we do not have an officer every day at every school, especially not in our elementary schools. We do in our middle and high schools.
Yeah, I've thought about this a lot, and, you know, at first, you're, one of your, we need them, and then you think, well, we don't want to turn our schools into, you know, gated communities. But then, when you think about how easy it is for someone just to walk onto campus, and even with our law enforcement folks that may be, you know, right there when we need them, it may be too late at some point. And I've just been giving that a lot of thought for the last few months and coming up on budget, you know. I don't know how that plays into it, or how we, the conversation that we're going to be having with the supervisors in the next few weeks, you know, if we put that on the agenda. Because I, my fear is, you know, it, it'll be too late to have someone there as a deterrent, because it's just so easy to walk onto a campus. Whether we want to admit that or not, you can just walk onto a campus. And even with all the security that's there, if someone wants to get into a building, we just need to be doing, I believe, everything we can to make sure that we eliminate that possibility. And I know that can be almost impossible, but it's, it's, it's really tugging at me these days.
Yeah. We do have a comprehensive plan for improving the security equipment at each school, and I would invite any of the board members who've not had a chance to do so, to visit Falling Branch Elementary, where we do have the Aphone, and we do have the card swipe key system, additional cameras and monitors, and we intend to put that system at each school. We got the state grant for about $60,000 in CPS and CHS and CES, I believe, are the next three schools. It is my intent to bring to the board a request that you consider asking the supervisors for the dollars that we are deficit to go ahead and do every school. And that comprehensive cost of doing that work at every school is somewhere around $380,000. And so I will be bringing that to you, and although, as you said, you know, it is still possible to go into a school, at least if we have those additional safeguards, it does present additional obstacles to entry to the school. And we believe that even if we were to fund those standards now, that we could still continue to apply for the state grants and do some additional things to enhance security with the state grant money. So that's on the horizon.
With the, with the card reader system, if a parent or visitor comes during the school day to Falling Branch, what, what is the process? How do they?
I'm not sure that I can answer that question for you, and Harvey's not here. Lois, have you been over and tried that to see exactly what happens? Could you speak to that? I have not been and tried to have my card read.
Yeah, I've just done a, a quick process. You, you ring the bell, and then the administrative assistant can see you on her computer screen. If she does not know who you are, she can talk to you while you're still outside and ask you to show your ID. And it's a good enough camera that you can see the ID and look at it before you then flip a switch and allow them to enter.
Okay. So before the bell rings for the day, is that door open and kids are coming off the bus and going in, and then it?
When they're coming off the bus, the door is open so that they can come in, but they don't come in.
A different entrance?
They come in a different door, and that's supervised by a teacher at that time. Thank you.
Back to what Ms. Franklin was talking about, we, we did have a couple of situations where individuals enter our buildings. They were apprehended immediately, but the point is, they were apprehended in the buildings. And it's, it's a very difficult situation, and I can't help but think that safety must come first, and we need to take a close look at that as we walk down this road.
Not to disagree, but I, just because I know the public will see this, the two recent incidents that we've had, the individual was apprehended outside the school.
Oh, good.
In both cases.
Good.
The one individual did not go into the school. They were on school property.
Excellent.
And the second individual did go in, but did leave and was apprehended after they left the school campus.
Well, I appreciate your concern about it and pushing forward on our need.
So I think this is something that we need to keep in mind as the budget process comes up and our talks with the supervisors.
Are we scheduled to meet with them?
We do have a meeting date, but I don't remember what it is.
It's December 10th.
December 10th, we have a joint meeting with the supervisors.
Thank you. Any other unfinished business?
We had discussed talking with our legislators. Have we moved down that a dollar, thought about it?
That's been postponed.
Yeah, I know. But we're just going to wait until after the election.
Our goal is to wait till after the elections and then try and find a date that is convenient before the start of the, before the General Assembly convenes in Virginia, and that occurs in mid-January. So we'll have a little bit of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Announcements and information.
I just want to say the talent show at Blacksburg High School last Saturday night was awesome, and I thank everybody that worked to make it happen. It was awesome.
Agenda preparation, upcoming school board meetings?
Well, the other, I'm sorry, Joe. The other announcements were the openings, the openings of the high schools, the new high schools, Auburn High School and Blacksburg High School. It was really wonderful and very uplifting, and again, very affirming, and I'm still not believing that they were open on time. We want to thank everybody who was a part of that, but the open houses and the dedication were very, very special, both places.
Thank you.
Thanks to everybody who made it. Yes.
Agenda preparation? I can't pull that up, so you're going to have to see what I'm not seeing.
Yep.
Okay, November 5th, we have a regular meeting. November 13th at, is that Monday?
Wednesday.
That's Wednesday. Okay. We all know about that process. And then November 19th, we will have our second meeting of that month. You have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Joe. Yeah.